Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, June the ninth, twenty twenty-five, and our regular Commissioner's Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is called by our County Perk, Mary Jane Barbilla Sanlone. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Ratnall.
Present.
Commissioner Moya.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
Commissioner Garza.
Present.
We have a call, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Mitter, Commissioner's Court Chaplain. Dr. Mitter, good to see you.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
Let me start with reading just a brief scripture from Proverbs, chapter twenty-four. It says, "By wisdom a house is built, and by understanding it is established. By knowledge the rooms are filled with all precious and pleasant riches; and a wise man is full of strength, and a man of knowledge enhances his might." Let us pray this morning. Our Father, Creator of all, we gather this morning to participate in the essential matters of building the house, which are the lives, both present and future, of your people. And this court, our judge, commissioners, elected and appointed officials come together on this very day seeking to make decisions which would benefit the greater good of this community. May our chosen leaders first turn to you as the only true and trustworthy source of guidance. May the wisdom that they seek today be granted so that the house can be built. May their understanding be expanded so that the house has a firm foundation. And may their knowledge of the times provide for the prosperity of the house. And Father, may you grant our leaders health and strength in body, mind, and spirit for the tasks that lie ahead. And may they be assured of your help as they labor to build the house today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, Commissioners, communications. Any thoughts to share?
We did have a structure fire over the weekend. I know Commissioner Morales, you probably have more details on the structure fire.
I haven't talked to Mr. Barbilla. He sent crews out there to help out. We're going to continue this morning helping out the district. I know that they posted on Facebook something about, or not something about, if you all want to donate for shirts, cats, or anything that you would want to donate, just go by there. He's there.
Yeah, he lost his home entirely. As Commissioner said, you know, the court is willing to help, you know, whatever way we can. And, you know, just keep a lookout for ratholes and stuff like that to help out this gentleman this time of the week. I know we can definitely...
Sure. I visited with Mr. Barbilla yesterday. Luckily, he, like he said, escaped without a scratch. You know, he was in a poor situation, he needed the basic necessities. But luckily, he was unhurt. I did ask him how he feels or believes, how the fire started. He said normally in the afternoons does some barbecuing, and he was tired, basically forgot to turn off the fire completely, and unfortunately it spread during the middle of the night while he was asleep. He managed to get up and escape from the flame. But yeah, it's a total disaster. The entire house burned down, so very unfortunate. Mr. Barbilla, longtime resident of our community. So I think the outpouring for the community is there this weekend. There was response by local citizens with their equipment, trying to clean up, help clean up. There is quite a bit of potentially hazardous material there that I think it would be a public benefit, maybe for the cleanup. You know, I don't know how you feel about that, but that structure fire may bring some potential hazards to the neighborhood.
Hopefully, Judge, if we get a recommendation from the fire department that there's some issues there that require the assistance for a proper removal, Judge, then, you know, that's something that we could definitely consider to get done.
Yeah, certainly he won't have the financial means to clean it up himself, I don't believe, so we may have to step up.
Yeah, we're currently working on a plan to make sure that we help them any way we can. So we can clear everything up. And like I said, continue prayers for Mr. Barbilla.
Judge, I know you had spoken with him yesterday. You're waiting for response from the family. Does he have a place to stay?
He went with his sisters. I think last night he stayed with some friends. They're making arrangements to bring in some, I guess, more permanent housing, a mobile home, or a, you know, possibly an RV to move into the place. But I guess it has to be cleaned up first. I know in the past the court has provided funds for temporary housing for emergency victims. He did not request that from me yesterday, but we can continue visiting with him on that.
Yeah, sure, we'll be there. And like the judge mentioned, you know, a lot of citizens came to the rescue all day. I saw it on Facebook. You know, we had downloads, I believe his last name is Ben Rodriguez out there with his backhoe assisting this gentleman cleaning up the property. So thank you to everyone that helped out. You know, so Pata always steps up in cases of emergencies and stuff like that.
Also, shout out to Roosevelt Rodriguez and his sons. They were out there. I was out there till like two in the morning as well.
Yes, and of course, I was up early Sunday morning, and you could tell our fire crews had been up all night, and our fire department. Luckily, it's a few blocks away, block away, but the response was quick. But that fire engulfed quickly. It's a one structure house, and, but they were there until early morning hours, five or six in the morning. Yeah, it's unfortunate. And, you know, and I received a call this morning from our golf course manager, Mr. Barbilla. We, late Saturday evening, apparently some juvenile kids began a fire, started a brush fire. Luckily, there was two other, three other kids that were playing ball. They saw him, called him out on it, and they ran off into the brush. He did file a police report, see if we can apprehend those individuals. But luckily, the other kids, the responsible kids, went out and got water from nearby ponds and put out the fire. So thanks to them, there's a considerable amount of brush here that could easily cut fire, and really a fire could have spread to our neighborhood homes. So I'd like to commend those young kids. Hopefully, we can get them to come to Commissioner's Court, and I thank them for their actions. But yeah, the same day, but early in the evening, assisted by Mr. Pena, the top course.
Shout out to those individuals.
Yeah.
Also, Judge, I know we had an incident at Falcon Lake. Lieutenant, do you have any more information on that incident we had in Falcon Lake regarding Texas獣life?
I'm not aware of that one.
Yeah, where, I know there was, I saw it on social media. I know they rescued, they rescued a child right there on Falcon Lake.
I just came on the video. That's all I know about that, but yeah.
But do you know that was in Falcon City Park, or was that at the boat ramp?
I'm not exactly sure where it happened. I don't have the accurate details on it.
Well, shout out to Texas Parks and Wildlife as well. I know they rescued, I believe, seven-year-old, eight-year-old, something like that. You know, she floated away.
On the inflatable.
Yeah, on the inflatable. She drifted off, you know, on that inflatable. So shout out to them. You know, they're nearby. They were able to rescue this child. You know, so just be alert when you're out there on Falcon Lake, you know, just be extra vigilant on your kids, please.
One announcement that, of course, I think last meeting we announced that Valley Metro, our public transit provider, will be offering daily bus service to Laredo two or three times a day. And they just invited me that ten days ago, mark your calendar for the groundbreaking here at the courthouse, Monday, June the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at ten thirty a.m. to announce their no longer awaited service to Laredo on two or three times a day, back and forth, public transportation. So that certainly will be a great benefit for the community. So invite everyone to their community to, you know, to take advantage of that bus service. If you want to save on some money on gas, they'll be making three or four daily trips to Laredo.
Three or four daily trips.
Yeah, they, so it'll start at eight, and then come back, and then ten, twelve, so two-hour round trip to the El Metro bus station. That's what will, that way they can connect to the other bus routes from El Metro. So they've made agreement with El Metro Bus Service of Laredo.
Includes weekends as well?
I'm not sure. That's a good question. I will see if it, I'm not sure about that.
You can answer my question?
Yes, yeah. Any other communications?
Judge, a slight maybe shift of schedule today. We have forty-nine District Courts. I have a very busy juvenile docket, unfortunately, Judge. So I know there's an executive session item, Judge. I don't know if you want to take it, because I have to step out at nine-thirty, but I'll be back later by tennis, Judge. So I don't know if you want to wait till...
Well, we can wait till the ready end.
Okay.
Communication, Commissioner. We'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioner's Court on any item on the agenda. Well, item number six is the pool of invoices in your package, Commissioners. We had invoices from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five through June the fifth, twenty twenty-five for a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion to approve to them.
Motion to approve to them by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Although opposed, say no. Motion carried. Item number seven is a pool of Treasury reports. Salinas Treasury provided the report. Page one is our investment pools. CDs totaling of ten, I think, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Interest earned for the month was twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. And for the year, interest earned has been four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Page three has our fiduciary demand accounts, which includes water work, Lloyd Bridge, our operating account, pool cash. We have beginning balance of three million, six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We had revenues of five million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Expenses of seven million, three hundred and forty dollars, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-six cents. Running balance of two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eleven cents. And those visit expenses were just money being shifted, I think, from one investment account to another. Page three, continuing with the fiduciary demand accounts. We have beginning balance of one million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents. Revenues, deposits of four hundred, five hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. Expenses of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Running balance of one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents. With those accounts also, Mr. Barbilla, we're working on reimbursements. At the end of the year, our revenues are falling short. We're working on reimbursement from TDA for the booster station and the drainage system improvements. We've submitted those. We've also submitted the Texas A&amp;M Colonial Study. Those should be coming in. And we're waiting on SB twenty-two.
That's correct, Judge. We had, as you well know, the previous fiscal year, Judge, we had some money that was brought in that were not used. They required an audit from us, in which we satisfied all the requirements of that audit. Now, the only thing we're paying is getting that check back to them, Judge. So as soon as we get that to them, I think that should hopefully...
I believe they reached out to your office. They have the instructions.
They did, Judge. They did. So I don't know if we have a physical check yet, but if we do not have a physical check yet, Judge, we will make sure we get that as soon as possible.
I appreciate that. Yeah, so then that may be the holdup. I don't know, but we haven't received almost half, a little over half a million dollars for the Sheriff Department and your department. So we've been fronting that, and it does get a little heavy for it.
I know. So we'll try and get that done, if any requires. Go ahead and drop it off first.
Okay. Very well. And like you said, that money was not spent until it's there.
And it's accounted for, including the interest accrued during the fiscal year.
Okay. Moving on to our energy, monthly report, energy usage. For the month of May, electricity usage was sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. And water was seven thousand, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. You know what? We had that rain study from Texas.
Texas.
That, it seems like ninety-five thousand a month that he's affecting our monthly usage to be a little high at the budget board. We've been steadily under sixty-five, so hopefully, I don't know how to budget extremely over budget, or should I just rely on the numbers that we're currently experiencing?
I would keep it at seventy-five.
Yeah, because he recommended a monthly allowance of ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five thousand, yeah. Seems extreme.
It seems a little high.
It's almost fifty percent and more.
Yeah. So it's been steady at that amount. So we'll see. Moving on to our royalty production. The several gas wells are on the downside. For the month of May, we received a check for five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, which is a little higher than the previous month. Moving on to the rents from our facilities. The Southern Southern Center brought in four hundred and thirty-six. The Pavilion brought in two thousand, four hundred and fifty for the month of May. And the Community Center for the month of May brought in four thousand, seven hundred. Moving on to page seven is our revenues from our County Perk, District Perk. The revenue for Fund Ten, County Perk for the month of May was three thousand, one hundred and seven, fifty-five cents. Fund Fifteen was five hundred and thirty-five dollars. District Perk, Fund Ten was not one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Fund Fifteen, two hundred and two dollars. There were no, I think this month is the written issuing of the permits for the art ordinance. We'll see what comes in for this month. And our sales tax continues to bring in two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. So there's still a considerable amount of economic activity within our community with revenues. Landfield for the month of May brought in seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. The jail brought in two hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Jail telephones, seven thousand, three hundred and three and twenty-seven cents. Jail bond fees, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and jail office fees. And EMS for the month of May brought in a hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. EMS, I don't see them here, but there was some good news from the coming out of the legislative session. I think counties of our size are eligible to apply for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for ambulance. So I think we'll be getting ready to hopefully...
I read that out to notify the court. I haven't seen it in the legislative update.
Yeah, so those are not competitive. We're kind of assured to get that ambulance. So that's good news. And they've done really well. I mean, they need it there. Also, on the jail, I spoke with the sheriff, and I see, Jill, Mr. Guevara, our regional jails are completely full with federal inmates.
Right now, we're actually going to be expecting more. We've been getting some guys from the marshal's office, mature witnesses, and they've been staying there about fifteen to twenty days because of the current courts that are going on. We have some judges that release them and some judges that don't. So we're going to be expecting this week to go back up to about a hundred and forty at the male and about forty at the female.
So they're almost, yeah, they're almost completely full, because we have to reserve some of the, for our local, I think, out of our hundred and eighty jail. Is that what the capacity is?
One eighty-eight is regional and forty-eight is the female. We have to stay below a certain number due to state standards.
Yeah, exactly. So we're, that would be considered full for this. Thank you, Guevara. Moving on to our revenue from the JP, JP Precinct One for the month of May brought in thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents. JP Precinct Two, nine thousand, six hundred. JP Precinct Three is two thousand, sixty-eight dollars. And JP Precinct Four brought in six thousand, five hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents. And then our water plant, their totals for both water and sewer, the total amount for the month of May was four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. That's all revenues, including the transportation. Motion by Commissioner Solis, to approve the Treasury report I presented, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Item number eight is a pool of checks issued, and we have checks from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five through June the sixth, twenty twenty-five, for a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and forty-six cents.
I was going to add to it, Judge. Workman's comp, for some reason, didn't come out on there.
Okay.
We went ahead, between Bailey and Bepita Bobby, they figured it out and added on there. So it is, it's not reflected on here, but it is in the system.
So, okay.
It's been corrected.
It matches up with the...
Yes.
With the invoice.
Yes.
Motion to approve is presented by Commissioner Solis.
Second.
Presented by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Item number nine is tax assessor collector's departmental report.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Been a pretty good month, as far as collection goes. For the month of May, we had, in our annual plan, we have a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, both for current and delinquent penalty and interest. And then we had refunds of a thousand, eighty-one, ninety-two. Interest and sinking, we had a total of sixty-one thousand, one twenty-one, forty-one. Refunds, three hundred dollars and ninety-five cents. Farm to market, fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Refunds, forty-six cents. Special road and bridge, total of nineteen thousand, three thirty-one, eighty. And we had a hundred and fifty-six dollars and two cents in refunds. Overpayments, one sixty-one. Delinquent attorneys, eleven thousand, five twenty-four, thirty-six. For a total of tax collections of two thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one fifty-eight, and eighty-four cents. Fees and other collections, we had hotel motel, eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine, and eighty-three cents. Copies and faxes, sixty dollars. Under registration, four hundred and ten dollars. Interest earnings, twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. For a total of collections, other collections and tax collections, for two hundred and forty-three thousand, one forty-five, and twenty-seven cents. Collection rate is at eighty-five point eighty-three compared to last year, eighty-five point thirty-eight.
Take a chance.
So we're, we're okay. Hotel motel tax, we had collections from October the first through January the first of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four and fifty-nine cents. Of course, that other one, hotel, the one on...
Hey, folks, you have a quick question for the officer.
They're quarter, so we lost that. But other than that, it's steadily coming in.
Yeah, the many years of the lake not having sufficient water to bring in, attract fishermen and vacationers is showing, been ten years almost, that we have enough water in the lake. So fortunately, I can have a hotel pulled down.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to reports and presentations. Item number ten is update on the County Sheriff's Office County and Regional Revenue Report. The sheriff is at a conference this week, so Mr. Guevara, what's your time, Mr. Guevara?
Captain Joe, the administrator.
Okay. Captain Guevara will be giving the report.
I have the, I'm going to reissue these, the ones that, or since you guys don't have many to do on. So basically, the current revenue for the third quarter, which is from March to May, the third quarter earnings are eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. For, this is for combined agencies total, regional, county jail, and the Mississippas, which includes CVP and other agencies that are holding. The overall totals for year to date from the fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five is one million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. This includes everything from the transportation, phone systems, bond fees, medical, civil process, and mileage discharge to just for the services we provide for their revenues.
So you're at one point nine.
One point nine.
With five months to go, that in July, about this. Yeah, four months. So, yeah, you're well within, I think your revenues have exceeded our expectations for we budgeted for. I think we budgeted.
And we're trying to, like I said, the marshals go, we passed general inspection in January with the state, and the marshals have been coming down recently. They've been coming down more often to check the facilities. There are some issues that were brought up that we aren't attending to, but that's another.
Yeah, sure. We'll continue to work with you on those issues. Yeah, we need to take, you know, take it fully compatible with what they require.
Yeah, and they have told us that they will be sending more. At least they're keeping us busy right now. So we're trying to keep the numbers high. That way the revenue keeps coming in.
You can see the steadily increase from first quarter, second and third quarter. From six hundred and twenty-eight to eight hundred and...
Another thing that the sheriff was finally able to do is gain access to the LEED software, the LEED program, which is, we're going to go ahead and rebid the contract rates, the daily rates. I think they haven't been adjusted since two thousand and thirteen, which is the last time that when the sheriff was a jail administrator. He's the one that took care of it. I know he took his laptop with him to the conference, and he is working on some numbers. We should have something...
That's good. That'd be great.
Hopefully by the end of the month already situated, that we can present it to the U.S. Marshals and get an approval for an allowance increase.
Very well. That would really increase the amount of revenues that would be...
Yes, sir.
Captain, this report is to the end of May?
This is to, from the fiscal year, beginning of twenty-four to the end of May of this year, yes, sir.
Okay. Just one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, item number eleven is an update on the new world screw worm that Jesse Rodriguez, our county extension, and AgriLife Extension. Yes, Jesse, all the ranchers in, especially in our area are, I wouldn't say scared, concerned as to what may be coming our way. So I appreciate you being here and trying to bring some calm to the ranchers in our area.
I don't know if it's going to be calm.
I saw they had like...
I was hopeful, yes.
They had, they had like, what do they call, like checkpoints or something like that?
So, good morning, Judge Commissioners. I want to take a minute to introduce Ariana Casillas. She's already...
I met her a few weeks ago, yes.
There has not been a formal introduction to the court yet. They're working on that once for you and, and working on that. We'll do that. But she's, she's already been helping us out here, and so we're going to be partnering on all of these, so welcome aboard. Yes, real quick, I wanted to update y'all. We did take some four H members to State Four H Rondo last week. We took eight students. They did well, not as well as we hoped, but competition was tough. We are taking seven students this week to take name and keys over to for leadership lab, to hopefully get them more involved in the program.
That's good, Jesse. I know it helps. Good to even have all the guests.
So Ms. Casillas is passing out a little bit of information. So there's three flyers. One of them is informational publication that they, AgriLife just put out, and the others are flyers or programs that we're going to have. Actually have a program this afternoon scheduled. It'll be at IBC. Hopefully, y'all can make it to that. And that's going to be just an update from AgriLife and a couple of other agencies on what's going on with this program. So the main thing that we're doing right now is trying to put out as much information to combat everything else that we can say on social media and that. So if y'all, some of you don't know who you are, for me, you're probably with true or am I?
I am old enough to remember the last outbreak, which was mid nineteen-seventies. And I remember what especially my father and other rancher were having to do during that time, treating every newborn calf just about. And any wounds on any animal, especially cattle, were susceptible to being infected by the screw worm. And I think something that is equally concerning is, of course, we have great investments in wildlife, especially whitetail deer operations in our county and all of South Texas. And I remember there wasn't very many deer back then. Certainly, they were very susceptible to that plague. And, and yes, fortunately, it was pushed back rather quickly, that outbreak. But I know it was very prevalent in the sixties, which I don't remember, but the seventies, I do remember that outbreak in the seventies.
Yes, so they were able to eradicate in the United States by producing sterile flies. So they were ready, flies sterilized, sterilized the males, and then when they were made with the females, they were sterile, they would produce offspring. And the females only made one, so they would die. When they were able to push it out of the United States in the mid-seventies, they shut down the plant. The plant was in McCook, a corner of Fidel Base, still there. If they were able to push it back all the way to Patanoa in two thousand and one, but as soon as they stopped releasing flies in two thousand and one, they started making its way back up. So the latest numbers we have is that it's somewhere in Mexico. So they set about seven hundred miles from the border, from our border. So right now they have a stop on all imports. Mexican cattle are not being allowed to cross in. They're inspecting all that. I don't know how that's going to work. The plant has... The plant has been inactive for nearly fifty years. So they're, we're working on, on reactivating the plant. Uh, they're kind of bringing it to today's standards, so that's gonna mean a lot more. Obviously, they use radiation, some kind of, of, of chemical, I don't know what they use. So, uh, that's gonna take a while. So what, what we're telling people is there's needs to be a lot of surveillance. Uh, back then, people were doctoring, people would go out every day to look for their cattle, look at their cattle, newborns, things like that. People are not doing that as much as, as we used to. And like you said, Judge, with the wildlife, back then, there wasn't many deer, and if they died, they died. Now people have a big investment, well, if you can round up your cows every day and treat them and, and look at them, how are you gonna do that with your deer? So that's, that's one of their concerns.
I, I did reach out to the Congressman, I think like the multiple public commissioner under border closely. There, is there any sense that there's gonna be some help for the ranchers, uh, uh, coming our way as far as extra help? We, uh, most of us are, uh, part-timers, uh, we, we don't have help, so if, if we, if we don't get extra help to, to contain, uh, the outbreak when, when it, well, hopefully it doesn't get here, I think it'd be very difficult. And then, like I said, there's one plant only in Panama, right? Uh, that, that is not producing enough sterile male flies to, uh, completely, you know, push, push the outbreak back. Uh, I'm hearing two to three years before, uh, a new plant, whether it's that plan or building a complete in the United States would be in operation. So during that time, uh, it, it can get really serious and ugly, I, I think, especially our cow herd and especially in Texas, uh, possibly decimated by, uh, by this outbreak, uh.
So that, that's the biggest concern right now is, is the manpower, because most people are not full-time ranchers like they were back in those days. And so people go check on their cows once or twice a week, make sure they have water, things like that. Now you're gonna have to be checking every day, and you're gonna have to have cowboys to help you doctor those sick cows, uh, and, and the baby calves, and so that's, that's where the problem's gonna be. And right now, what they're saying is that, uh, the, the surveillance and all that is gonna fall on the tick inspectors. Well.
We're having a follow-up with.
They already, they already have their plates full, plus they're only along the border, so everywhere else, they don't have those kind of, uh.
No, I, no, my understanding is the major spread or cause of spread would be the movement of animals that are infected, uh, so.
So, uh, so.
So the flies don't fly all that much, or?
So that's the other thing too, is, uh, it is, uh, those flies are opportunistic, and so they'll, they'll, they'll lay their larvae anywhere. So it's a, it's a zoonotic disease, any animal, uh, domestic, cats, dogs, even humans. Uh, there was a screw worm case in Florida like in two thousand seventeen. Um, but, so the fly doesn't travel very far, but it can be carried by any, any kind of animal. And one of the concerns now is that, uh, back in the seventies, it didn't get very far north because, uh, the temperatures start cooling down, so the flies don't reproduce. But now it's getting warmer further into the year and further north. So there's projections, and I don't know how true those are and, and whatever, but they're projecting that if it hits the US, it could spread as far as Kansas within a couple of months. And on top of that, you have more transportation of animals. You know, back before, you'd send your cattle to market and that was it, now people are overwintering in Kansas and things like that, so. Uh, there's, there's a whole lot more to it, moving parts. Uh, the other thing that's being explored right now is, uh, back in the sixties, seventies, uh, we didn't have some of the tools we have now. Iromectin didn't exist back then. So Iromectin is a good, uh, uh, control for parasites, which obviously flies are a parasite. We don't know how effective it is, uh, there still needs to be some studies, uh, as, as far as the treatment period and all that. Uh, I, there's a lot of talk on social media about, uh, medicated feeds, uh, uh, Iromectin and all that. And I know there's a company in South Texas, very popular feed company, that's starting to sell treated feed. Uh, the, the advice from all of the state agencies is to hold off on that. As you know, uh, medicated corn, medicated, uh, molasses is our biggest, uh, tool for fighting fever tick. So if we start feeding, uh, Iromectin to every animal, then we're gonna create some resistance and possibly hurt ourselves.
And of course, but were those, uh, me, uh, Iromectin, there, there is a withdrawal period too.
It's about a month, right?
Two months, twenty-eight days, almost, well.
Yeah, I mean, well, like for deer, they, you have to stop feeding all their hens, you can't, you can't feed them medicated corn. And the, the cattle, I think it's twenty-eight days.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight.
Yeah. The withdrawal is for you?
Yeah, forty-eight, if, if we're, because fever tick, they, they offer, the government does offer.
It's, it's twenty-eight if you, if you do injectable, right?
Yes. Well, it's, now it's forty-two. They, they found that, uh, there may be some traces, uh, after forty-two days, so they, they increased it from, third, what it was thirty-five, now you could, you could take animal's toxin at thirty-five, now you have to wait till, uh, forty-two days after, uh, for the withdrawal from the Iromectin injectable. And forty-eight for the molasses.
So, so all of that right now is what they're looking at? Because if that's gonna happen, if we're gonna start feeding those things, then we gotta figure out when we can stop feeding and not have so many flies. And, you know, managing practice as far as castration, dehorning, randy and all that, so that, you know, because all of that fly, all it's looking is for, uh, an open.
Open flesh.
To lay its, to lay its eggs, and then the larvae is what actually is the screw worm, and that's what burns up to the skin. Uh, and unlike all the other flies, all the other flies like to lay their eggs in, in rotting flesh, decaying flesh, or, uh, you know, uh, feces, these like open wounds, fresh open wounds. So they're, it's the only fly of its kind, so that's what's very concerning, so. That's pretty much what I know right now, that's what we can say.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna stay busy, I have a lot of questions to answer, but I appreciate you.
And they are, uh, they are preparing, uh, some kits for us, so we will eventually, hope.
I remember those kits, the wilds that, uh, we would collect.
So we can collect, uh, the, the.
Screw worm.
We're going to the office and we'll sell them to be tested. So once that starts happening, uh, a- as far as I know, there's been some claims on social media that they, that they found screw worm in several areas in Texas and out in other parts of the country.
Good.
So right now, it's still in Mexico, we're hoping to keep it in Mexico, but, you know, that's.
So the last was, that group, seven hundred miles away?
Uh, Oaxaca.
Oh, Oaxaca.
So, I don't know how, how fast it can travel, I don't know, you know.
Well, it depends on the movement of those animals, especially the cattle.
And like I say, it can come in on anything, so transport, humans, you know, anything, as long as, uh, those, uh, flies are there, it can, it can get here, so. Uh, hopefully y'all can make it this afternoon, it's from two to four thirty at IBC. And then July first, this one will be a, a virtual, uh, broadcast statewide. And then on July first, we'll have an in-person meeting, and we'll have some people from different agencies.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, same for active.
Item number twelve, uh, Commissioners, is, uh, update on projects and projects for Spata County, Missy Van Udele, All-Star Strategy Groups.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for playing patiently for.
Oh, no problem, no problem, I'm gonna be here for a while this weekend, so. It's good to see all of y'all.
Yes.
Um, it's been about a month now that, uh, we started working with the county. And, uh, you should have in your packet, um, few sheets. Uh, this is gonna be a report of everything that we have, uh, worked on with the Sheriff Department. Uh, it goes grant by grant, I'm not gonna, you know, take all your time, but it's, it's there, um, for you to, to see, um, the other, the other department we're working with now is with the Fire Department. Um, Gabby reached out to us and asked for some help as well with, with administrative, um, some issues that they were having on their grants. Uh, we did speak to her on upcoming, uh, grant opportunities, and we'll see that there, uh, towards the end, and that's the safer grant. I don't know if y'all have, uh, applied for that one before, for, for the Fire Department, where it's.
I believe so, for equipment?
Uh, for equipment or for, uh, personnel.
I believe we have, but, uh, I don't know how, when the last time we did that, but.
And I would bring that back to Commissioners' Board, uh, for approval, but that's just kind of a, a discussion item on there, just so.
I believe we was, I believe we purchased two gamutises with that grant, was that the safer grant? Uh, currently, the two gamutises that were driving on a daily basis, that it was a grant?
I'm not sure if it was safer.
It wasn't safer.
Is this for the three hundred and twenty-four million?
That's the, yeah, that's what's in that, um, in that grant. Um, but this one is basically, it, it tapers it off, I believe, in, in three years. So it gives you, you know, eight percent funding and it's second annual sixty.
Or thirty.
Something, it's some increments like that, um, I, I forget these exact numbers. But it is, uh, a three-year, uh, phase on that one, kind of, um, staggering or scaffolding, so, um, to help them. And usually, if it's a volunteer fire department, it would be to have like one or an assistant with the chief. Um, so that's something that we can bring back to Commissioners.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think.
Um, and, and I, I was glad to hear from her, um, that she reached out and felt comfortable to ask us for that assistance. That's what we're here for. Uh, we did also submit, uh, a community project request. Uh, I don't know if you all remember the last time I was here, but we were told, or I was sent an email through Congressman Guerra's office, that they did have funding, uh, through for some infrastructure drainage. So, uh, Premier was kind enough to help me put this packet together very quickly. We got letters, some letters of, uh, support as well. And, um, I am going to have that packet for, if the judge's office and any of y'all would like to take a look at what that, um, packet or application looks like. But this was the Spata County, county-wide drainage sidewalk and street infrastructure improvements. And we asked for three point eight million, uh, with this grant, there was no match. So, um, we'll see what, what the Congressman can do to work this matter.
I know.
Give us a little bit of that funding, uh, out this way, but, uh, Premier did have, uh, maps and a, a good, uh, representation on what was needed, so I'm glad that was already done. So we did get that input all this way.
That, obviously, we keep our fingers crossed, that's the, that's the way you're gonna do it for our community, so.
Yes, that would be.
Well, I'm glad we were able, you notified to get it in in time.
I know, yeah, we, we have, uh, ten days maybe to get it in.
Last hour, but we got it in.
Got it in, got it in, so, uh, that's pretty much it. Do y'all have any questions for me? I know we're gonna have a workshop, uh, after this on grant opportunities and what your needs are, but I just wanted to give you, uh, progress on what we've done since four weeks.
Appreciate you, uh, helping, uh, our Sheriff's Office, especially, and, uh, the many brands that they have, so, bringing them up to, up to staff.
Yes, sir, yes, it's been good, it's been good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, I'll talk to you soon.
Commissioner, move on to the action items, we will deliberate and consider action. Item number thirteen is to approve the payment of the Spata County Independent School District Renewable Energy Scholarship Fund, uh, from the winning turbine companies' contributions. And as, as you know, Commissioners, it's part of the abatement, uh, for ten years. Uh, those companies were contributing, uh, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deeds, with the two budgets, it's two hundred and fifty thousand. And the, the Court had determined to allocate those, uh, funds to different organizations. And one of them was to provide a scholarship fund for, uh, graduate, graduating seniors, and that was for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the, of course, the, the county, uh, would turn over these funds to the school district. They decided to, uh, uh, distribute those funds am- among the top thirty, uh, scoring or, uh, uh, you know, graduating seniors. And they, uh, divided into different tiers, uh, with the, of course, the valedictorian and then the salutatorian. And then, uh, would be tier one and two, uh, tier three would be the, the, the top four. And then, uh, the top ten would then receive, uh, from five to ten, would receive an equal amount. And then from eleven to thirty, would receive an equal amount. Uh, I think every year, we read out the, the, trying to give them their congratulations and, uh, for their outstanding academic achievements. I'll read out, uh, the, the top thirty that these scholarships will, uh, be going to. Uh, the valedictorian was Mr. Roberto Cantu, and he will be the first year, receive seven thousand dollars. The salutatorian was Javier Garza, he will be, uh, receiving six thousand. Number three was Jared Garcia, and then number four was Rogelio Gonzalez Jr., they'll both be receiving twenty-five hundred dollars. Number five, Daniel Benalines, number six, Rafael Garcia, number seven, Dalina Garcia. Number eight, Roberto Garcia, number nine, Kevin Navas Rocha, and number ten, uh, Tom Yun, you know, and do, uh, two thousand dollars. Number eleven, Angel Gonzalez, number twelve, uh, Rihanna Ramirez, number thirteen, Jared Alba. Number fourteen, Augustine Seveno Asa, and fifteen, Lisa Esquivel. Number sixteen, Yanelli Jose Que, and number seventeen, Sahara Garcia. Number eighteen, Jacqueline Corta. Number nineteen, Esmeralda Resendiz. Number twenty, Mario Martinez, number twenty-one, Renee Bobar. Number twenty-two, or they both add number twenty-one, uh, Suque Garcia. Number twenty-three, uh, Daniel Flores, number twenty-four, Ashley Flores, number twenty-five, Betsy Alvarez. Number twenty-six, Carissa Arambula. Number twenty-seven, Alessandra Hernandez. Number twenty-eight, Madison Graceau. Number twenty-nine, Jasmine Samora. And number thirty, Caleb Guerra. So, uh, congratulations to the, the students, and I would need a motion, Commissioners.
Motion to approve scholarship, congratulations to the top thirty students.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, again by Commissioner Moya, uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, I would like, maybe, just to, uh, inform the school, if maybe we can get a list of, of the checks that were issued. I don't know, sometimes, the check might not be issued for any particular reason, we'd like to see what, uh, what the actual checks that were issued to the students. Item, uh, number fourteen is, uh, to approve the use of the Henry B. Martinez Center on July the fourth, twenty twenty-five for the Sacred Heart of Jesús Ministry Festival.
You know what, I wanted to have, uh, use the facility for the Fourth of July Festival. They just, they live, like, each, the commission, uh, and we have the ladies that, that work there, that, the ministry that's there. Uh, they, we stayed in the past, but unfortunately.
Motion to motion to approve.
Like Commissioner Solis, again by Commissioner Garza, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to approve a twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollar expense to replace the sword grinder at the regional jail. Sheriff wanted to reach out to me, and of course, Captain Getta also, that, uh, we had an emergency situation there with our grinder lift station there at the regional jail, uh, it went out. And we, uh, I guess on emergency basis, as if we'll get a new one in there, and we'll, we'll bring it, we'll bring the invoice to Court when we can. We, we can't, uh, uh, afford, uh, shutting down the regional jail.
Yes, sir, uh, so basically, the, the total was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, initially, when they had pulled it out, uh, what the tech had actually seen were the bearings. So we were hoping that it wasn't gonna go over five once they took it apart. Uh, they were able to find support, which actually brought it down to twenty-eight thousand, because if we would have had to replace the whole unit, it would have been about sixty thousand. Uh, so it was just for transparency to go ahead and, and bring it up, bring up the issue of the, of the grinder coming in.
But this payment will be out of nondepartmental, okay?
So this, this, this is just replacing the core, though?
It, it replaces the core, so it's, it's like it's brand new. Uh, it's not a brand new unit, but the whole inside of the, of the grinder will be new.
Uh, warranty, and they warranty it for a year?
It's a one-year warranty. Uh, anything beyond that would have actually cost us, they had one, three and five, and it would have actually gone up, I think it's about five to seven thousand for every tier that would have gone up. Uh, we, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you guys were able to approve it, uh, because we were starting to come up with other issues, because the, the sword lines are going to wreck right now. So we did have a small pump that did burn out on one of the lift stations, but we did have a spare to be able to replace it at the moment.
So, I don't know, it's, uh, it's an ongoing problem, there's, it's a lot of.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Garza, any discussion, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, Captain, also, I was speaking to the Sheriff over the weekend, you guys also have issues with mattresses?
Yes, sir, uh, so, that's another point, let me go ahead and get to the, the.
You talked about having issues, uh, I know the marshals were, were complaining about the mattresses.
They were, they were concerned about it.
So, so one of the issues that we ran up with, uh, with the marshals were that the mattresses, uh, that we have are extremely old. Uh, I guess the previous, the previous years, they were just, uh, buying new mattress covers for them, but still using the same mattresses, they, they didn't actually replace them. Uh, the actual mattresses that they did have, the, we do have a couple new ones, I think we had forty-four in stock. And when we went to go check them out, they're like the lowest quality, like they're, they rip real easily. Uh, those are, for later on, we wanted to present them to you guys. We're expecting, uh, they're gonna send us a trial one, uh, they're ripstop, and they're, the, the foam is actually like stiff, so the ones that we have right now, you can literally press them down with your fingers, and that's one of the main complaints that they may have.
Try them out and then go bring it to court and see, uh, yeah, well, uh, if if you think that'll, you know, be be all you need, yeah.
Two hundred and forty.
That's took, uh, completely replaced, retrofit, all the, all the facilities, both facilities, uh, have for all the beds and then have some spares. Uh, Bob Barker has, uh, basically told us that they're practically undistractable, uh, that's what we're gonna take. When we receive the the trial matches, we're gonna try it. Uh, he says that if they do end up puncturing it, that it's nearly impossible to start, uh, running, uh, a tear on it yet. And that's one of the issues of the covers that they're getting, they're buying covers from, they rip the covers, and then, I mean, they're just tearing them. They can hide contraband, and there we have found contraband in some of the mattresses, where they are tearing them and and trying to hide items in them.
Yeah, very good. So we'll, uh, we'll see how that trial, uh, run goes for that, and then bring it to, bring it to court.
Uh, actually, I got an an email this morning that it has already been shipped. So, like I said, the sheriff said, we're gonna tell them that we're gonna take it to its paces and try it out to see if it ripped or not.
Okay.
And the price that they quoted us was for ninety, I think ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Yeah, uh, the original price on that mattress is two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Very well. They're only sending one?
They're sending us one, yes. That way we can go ahead and try it out and see the foam on it and see if we can actually tear it. Uh, they they basically guarantee us that you won't be able to tear it by hand. And if somebody did tear it, or they end up cutting it, it's because they have a a shank or something in the facility, which is something that's not supposed to be.
Okay, thank you, Cap, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is, uh, to approve the use of overtime from Operation Stone Garden, this being twenty-four grant, number three, six, seven, two, nine, zero, eight.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, so.
We haven't received that big check yet, the announcement, is that coming with Congressman Moya?
Uh, well, so thi- this is just for Stone Garden twenty-four. Uh, we had a pending application. Uh, I already submitted everything, uh, literally the last thing, is to go to resolution, so that the offices of the governor can, they can all go with that one. Uh, on Friday, on Thursday and Friday, I worked on it, and there was about thirteen different things that I had to, had to submit when we're around. And I was calling a lot of people, trying to.
Calling the city.
Calling a lot of departments, uh, I was, yeah, I I don't think I'm very well, like, because of the. I was calling everybody, you know, I was like, I just need one answer, two answers, whatever, but I, but I got all that done at least. And this is the last, uh, that that's gonna be reversed to the next, uh, one of the resolutions that's gonna come up in a, in a bit.
Okay, this is for Mandy to to give them all over?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, for the, so the, on this one, Operation Stone Garden is, on he grants, is a pending one. So I submitted what I had at least, uh, I emailed Caroline Butler, she's the one that's the grant manager on there. Uh, I just told her, hey, the only thing that's missing is a resolution, but at least we sent it what we have.
Okay.
Instead of just waiting and, you know, but I did, I was aware of the, I I made her aware that she was gonna, we're gonna have this pending.
So do we have a resolution or what?
There is a resolution, it's in the next, uh.
Number twenty.
Oh, yeah, twenty twenty-five, so we have.
Okay, motion to approve the use of overtime from, uh, Operation Stone Garden, fiscal year twenty-four.
For these, and, uh, and then we can approve the Stone Garden, I mean, the resolution related to, Commissioner. I think you just got it there, so. Item number twenty-five, so to approve resolutions, support of fiscal year twenty-four, Operation Stone Garden.
Motion to approve the resolution is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Solís to approve the, uh, resolution that presented, seconded by, by Commissioner Morales, any discussion, although in favor say aye.
Has legal gone to the resolution or is it?
Uh, it's, it hasn't, uh, rebutted, uh, Mr. Piro has not rebutted, but it is verbatim the same.
Okay.
Of course, no issues, you can, I, you can take a look at it, it's gonna be the same thing. All I did was change, uh, the name of it, obviously, and the, uh, grant, that's it, uh, nothing.
Same resolution.
Same one for all the rest of them, I think, man. Uh, where can I, I, this is, uh.
We have, we're signing one already.
We're signing one, okay.
And we'll turn it over to the county clerk.
Right here.
Who's second at number sixteen?
Uh, Commissioner Morales.
Okay, thank you.
Item, uh, number seventeen, to approve the, uh, Texas County District Retirement, what is, what's it?
T C R is.
T C R, D, T C D R is retirement plan for the twenty twenty-six as presented. I was going through it, uh.
I did, it's in the copy, just for your review.
We're doing very well with it, I, I used the status of the retirement plan.
Yes, so this year, um, we are looking at, um, eleven point twenty-eight as our contribution percentage. Uh, that will be calculated for budget purposes for your next, uh, fiscal year. But it did go down about a percent in.
They, I know. Yeah, so we're, uh, almost fully funded, uh, the whole plan.
Yes, the funded ratio is ninety-five point five percent.
So that that's good, we don't have a, the county doesn't have a huge liability as far as promising retirement, uh, and we don't have the backing there. So I'm glad we're, we're almost fully funded, very good.
And it's gonna stay, everything, the plan will remain the same as.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Solís to presu-, uh, approve the retirement plan that presented, second by Commissioner.
Garza.
Garza, uh, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eighteen is to request the use of certificates of obligation funds for the following projects, Sheriff's Office improvement, uh, a match of five hundred and forty thousand, and the four H arena match of a hundred thousand. Morning, Mr. Morales. I can say, good morning, Mr. Gonzalez. Well, thank you for joining us this morning. Yes, we we had a meeting, and Mr. Gonzalez was present there, with Premier Janeary, last week, uh, with U S B A, with Mr. Ellen Holmes, of course, uh, his assistant Eric, uh, we, uh, we told him about obligating those funds, and one of the necessary requirements is for the Commissioner's Court to approve minutes of our, uh, obligation, obligating these funds, to make sure that, uh, we can move forward with the application. So, yes, for the Sheriff's Office improvement, which is, has moved along considerably.
Yes.
We need five hundred and forty thousand, the, uh, the, uh, the, the earmark is six hundred?
Six hundred and sixty.
Six sixty, that's correct. Six hundred and sixty, and we'll be matching five hundred and forty, uh, to make those improvements. And the four H arena, the earmark is one million dollars, uh, and we will be matching a hundred thousand.
Correct.
And so.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner, by Commissioner, uh, Solís, second by Commissioner Morales, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, Mary Jane, we will be permitted, so we can submit them, uh, as quickly as possible, uh, to, uh, U S B A for, as our obligation. I, item number nineteen is, uh, to report and reduce status on county projects, okay, we got, we, try to.
Yes, uh, well, starting with those, uh, the the Sheriff's Office, uh, we're about, uh, two months out, so that we're, uh, we're already working on the, on the plans, and, uh, we presented, uh, some layouts to the sheriff. And, uh, so we're picking up bidding up in about two months or so.
Uh, this.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And then for the arena, that one, we just got, uh, architect on board.
Yes.
Juan Miró Sanchez. And so that one, I believe, uh, towards the end of the year, we're gonna, we're gonna bid it up, because we're gonna start the the design process. It's gonna take about five months or so.
Fire station is moving along too?
Yes, fire station, uh, yes, that one, uh.
I know the plans that have been, uh, I think finalized.
Yeah, so we're gonna be bidding up, uh, towards the end of the month, this month.
Wow, that's good, sir, that's good, good news.
Yes, and, uh, so the other one, the old one, the booster station, that's about ninety-eight percent complete, so, and that one's planned on within the next two weeks. It should be done in construction. Uh, the drainage channel, uh, partly, that's seventy percent complete, and, uh, the county, uh, crews will be, say, uh, repairing the water line on Highway sixteen next week, but that one should be done in about a week or so.
The the installation, I talked to Mr. Gonzalez, of those valves, we tried them out, we closed them, but no pressure was lost throughout the subdivision. So we we can fix, uh, fix that leak without affecting any, any of our residents, uh, water, so that, that was good, that's a good, good, good.
Um, for the bore round, uh, we, uh, so we requested the, we requested funds, I believe, and we're pending approval. So those was, those ones, the plans are complete, so as long as we get, once we get the approval, uh, for the funds, then we'll offer bids on that one.
You know how long that, they usually take?
Uh, it depends, I'm not, I'm not too sure, hopefully within the next month or so, so, so we're just gonna follow up with the legislature.
We're having, uh, is it Parks and Wildlife will be down this week on, on, on the meet of Flores and, uh.
Well, I think they, they already came.
They came, they came, that's where we were on that, oh, they came?
It was Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I I heard we were out, of course, not.
Yes, yeah, they they actually came, uh.
And how did that go, did, did you, anybody accompany them, or?
I guess, I was there with them, so he was, yeah, he, he toured the park, I think everything went well with them.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, so he was, he was there with them. And then, uh, so that's about it, uh, the.
San Antonio, the.
The San Antonio.
Is a hundred percent, I believe.
Yeah, that that's the one, yeah, sorry, that's the one, yeah, that that was a hundred percent complete, so.
Uh, are we gonna have some ribbon cutting, or, uh, anything?
Oh, double check with my, I'm pretty sure we, we.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Gonzalez, and we were, we're heading to.
Okay, okay.
Okay, perfect.
Good news.
And, uh, the raw water, also, we had the pre-construction last week, so we're, we're going to work on that one, the raw water project.
Yeah, that's, uh, I think we got authorization, I think the court had approved the purchase of the equipment.
Right.
But now, I guess, we finally were authorized to order that equipment.
That is correct.
Uh, so it might take, uh, a few months, I think.
Yeah, that that's gonna take, uh, a few months, so.
Yes.
Few months for the, uh, equipment to come in, or for.
For the order to be processed.
Yeah, but at the same time, with the construction, we will, we will, we'll, I mean, we're already gonna start.
Like when we approved it, they didn't accept your right of way, because the grant hadn't actually been, uh, finalized.
That is.
And we're waiting for, uh, for work from U S B A.
Right.
We're waiting for, for the rule?
Yes, yes, we're ready, so now, now, so U S B A, the grants get a, get approved when, when you close it, like when we have the pre-construction, that's when you, everybody signs, so it's, it already started.
We did that last week, last Thursday, yes.
So from, so now it, so construction officially, it's already started.
But, but, uh, the the action that that we took as a court is already missing, and so, we can move along faster.
That is correct.
Yes.
And then, uh, Mr. Gonzalez asked me to let you know that, uh, for the cardinal, it's great, that's an old project, we have been reimbursed a hundred percent.
Okay. We did submit, uh, for reimbursements from, uh, the booster station and.
And the drainage.
Yes, uh, hopefully you can get those back, it's supposed to a million dollars after, yeah, Friday, so.
That is correct, but I think you guys.
Anything on the walking trail, is it already?
I think the walking trail, they were working on getting the the reimbursements, correct?
We submitted for reimbursement.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty is, so no, no action on those.
No action.
Item number twenty is to approve First Amendment to tax abatement between Zapata County and Fauton Best to update county road access. Commissioner, this was submitted by the company, uh, to my office. I did reach out to our consultant, who helps us with the abatement on this project, uh, Mr. Lo Campix, Jeff's known. And, uh, I I think we need, uh, what I requested from Jeff, and I think it's, it's, the court agrees, is, uh, so initially, they were gonna gain access from Highway three, now they're planning to have access from, uh, one of our county roads, on the Hendrani Road, uh, to build the project. I would like upgrades on that road, uh, and.
What's the condition of the road?
It it needs help, yeah.
Can it handle, uh, heavy machinery?
They'd have to use a lot more flexible base, I think, maybe six to eight inches more of.
And those are all reasonable requests, uh, from the entity if, uh, they're, uh, wanting to use it.
It's not a, a long ways in, maybe less than a mile, that they're gonna be accessing to to get to the project, but, uh, so, yeah, their, uh, their exhibit was ra- rather vague, so I think we should, they just wanna use, uh, the Hendrani Road, but I think we should include language to to make sure that we upgrade and.
It's reasonable, based off the.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, uh, I I guess depending on the size of the equipment that will be traversing the area.
Right.
Uh, what's the base type of, uh.
And so, Commissioner Solís will be working on on those requests, uh, and so we can bring this back, so, uh, just.
What's the table?
Motion table by Commissioner Moya, second by Commissioner Solís, any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion table. Item number twenty-one is to request two thousand five hundred dollars for the fireworks display on Friday, uh, July the fourth, twenty twenty-five. It's getting close, Carol.
It's getting close.
So where, where are we gonna be located, at the photograph again, or?
I don't know.
What's.
It's dry down there.
I know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was about to say.
I don't know what to say.
We, we, we just kinda, you know, we go around and we kinda look to see where the best place is gonna be.
I, do you prefer with, uh, our chief, I guess, to make.
Yes, yes, because I have form, I have to feel like, oh.
Motion to approve any, uh, information on the location.
I'll second.
And conditions, I guess.
Conditions, you know, are you gonna get with, uh, Chief Valiak, Court?
So do you want me to come back to court when I have the location?
No, uh, my.
I think if we get to inform the public of it, uh.
Yes, we try to, and then call us on a regular basis, even though I say when it's dark, you know, that the fireworks start at dark.
I know, I know the community really enjoys it, and my motion stands, my motion will be to approve pending location.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Solís.
And approval from Chief Valiak.
Okay, good, Commissioner Solís, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moya, any discussion? And this, oh, uh, how do we come up with a twenty-five hundred dollars last year?
Oh.
Commissioner.
I think we've got from each commissioner.
For that, yeah.
This one, what?
East Commissioner.
Each commissioner contribute a little bit.
Oh, okay.
From their discretionary funds.
That's the way I want to.
Well, I don't know, it's up to this, I don't have any money.
What, um, what about the hotel motel tax?
What's that?
I mean, we do have people come up in from, from, you know, outside of Zapata County for.
We, yeah, well, I don't know, should be.
What other way can we take it out, Commissioner Morales? Is there another fund we can use?
No, I mean, it's either gonna be a hotel motel or or that, I was gonna look and see where we got it from last year.
I think last year we used.
It was the Commissioner's last year.
Last year?
Yes.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that, I can add that in the motion.
Okay, what I can do is look at to see if we can do it from the hotel motel, and if we, we can't, then I will be requesting.
Second option.
Funds from y'all.
Okay.
So that's how it goes.
Your motion, Commissioner, is slowly, please, back to Sergeant.
We got it.
Second by Commissioner Moya, any discussion, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just want some clarification. As far as Danny, you know, uh, going through Danny, what does he need to do?
Approve the location.
Just to make sure that he.
And on standby.
Hey, get back with you guys, or?
Just to come and notify the public and.
We'll have another meeting in June, so you can just, you can come back in, uh, once our next meeting, uh.
Give us a time, and during, uh, twenty-third, comment, or just.
Notify.
Notifications, we can, we can.
Oh, bond, bond.
The twenty-third.
So, Commissioner, the twenty-third, you can come back and inform the court.
Okay.
That's a week, uh, almost, more than a week before the July fourth.
On that, on that meeting, we'll, we'll make sure, you know, that's the location we're gonna use, and we don't change it last minute, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item number twenty-two is to consider an agreement between Zapata County and Comprehensive Training Center, C T C, to keep the county informed of upcoming grant opportunities, Miss Lingta Vanis. Good morning, Miss Vanis, thank you for waiting.
Good morning. And thank you for having me, Doug, and commissioners.
Yes.
I just wanted to come in personally, introduce myself, we've been working with your county now. A couple of, uh, grant, uh, submissions with the veterans on this.
Yes, and we've done very well, thank you, yes.
Thank you, and actually, I had not even met Mr. Gonzalez.
Oh, really?
But, uh, we met over the phone, and then he's met with our team, and I really wanted to also let y'all know what an amazing job he's doing.
Yes.
Uh, because, uh, this grant is so much more than, uh, just the grant itself, there's so much compliance and so much extra work, and he's been doing an amazing job. That many of these grants, uh, that come before the, uh, Texas Veterans Commission, whether it be for continuation or competitive. If they are for continuation, they cannot receive full award because they do not meet the target numbers that were originally stated, or they lose their funding, and he's been able to maintain full award, a hundred percent, and.
And he's in love that, right, well, we've got an extra twenty thousand.
An extra twenty thousand.
Yes, I I did see that at the C T C, he, uh, actually did, uh, an amazing job for that.
Thank you.
So I wanted to, to let y'all know personally. Uh, and then also, uh, the fact that not only taking on one grant, but taking on now two grants for the. but taking on now two grants for the Texas Housing for Heroes, those combined, uh, excuse me, those combined grants are gonna be six hundred thousand dollars or so for your county, so... Uh, it's because of him also that I wanted to personally come and let y'all know that we are here available. Uh, we're housed in Hardinjan, I have twenty-three employees, we've been in business for twenty-four years, and we work with the entire state of Texas, and we also work with twenty-two other states. We not only write, we manage, and I realize you have someone hiding into this grant, I just found that out right now.
Well, we have an agreement, yes, for, uh, six months.
Okay, okay, so, uh, we have...
But it doesn't stop us from, uh, we, we have other grant consultants that help us with, with many other grants. I think some of the projects that were mentioned, I think each of them have a different grant, uh, grant.
Or grant submitment.
Yeah, and grant administrator.
Okay, well, it's, it's good to know, because there is so much, and that's all I was gonna say.
So y'all be, you be competing to a certain extent, but I think y'all be helping each other and helping the county.
Absolutely, and we do work with a few other counties, so it's never our intention, of course, to take away from anything that you're currently doing, any employee or anyone else that is contracted to do this type of work. Um, what we do is just above and beyond. You know, so if there is something that you currently are not energy or would like to apply for, that's what we're here for. We do also grant. So, uh, and we love to partner, you know, we love to partner. You know, we're not here, again, like I mentioned, to, to take away from anything, only to offer our services and know that we are local, and we have been around for a long time, and we just have a full team that will write, manage, and be able to keep you guys safe.
And, and I guess, for us, as a small little county that don't have a, a grant writer on staff who could afford, uh, a person of those, uh, capabilities that, that, uh, we, we do depend on, uh, you know, consultants, experts, that are willing to, to explore and look for, for funding that may be able to help us and, and bring it to our attention and say, we're interested, fine, and we're not, so I, I think, uh, that's how I look at, uh, at those opportunities.
Well, that's the best way to look at it, because I work with, you know, colleges, universities, nonprofits, cities, and they do, they have several, you know, they, they keep a, a variety because they don't wanna lose out, and sometimes the grants are all due around the same time, so rather than give up those opportunities, you know, why not farm it out to a few?
Exactly.
So I, I did bring, um, some brochures just to let y'all know a little bit more about us. And the, um, company is Comprehensive Training Center, that's the one that manages once a grant gets awarded. But the ERI is the one that actually writes the grant.
Right.
So because we don't charge you, you know, if we write it and, uh, don't get it, so you probably never hear of ERI, but we do work with Zapata County, uh, ISD as well. And so, uh, that's in our primary focus initially, twenty-four years ago when I opened it. It was educational research, so we work with about three hundred and fifty or so schools and charters and universities across the state, and we also, um, evaluate their grants as well. So just here to let you know about us, that we exist and that we're happy...
Well, and we've been, and we've been partnering, uh, with us for a couple of years, so it's good to see, uh, you know, the face of ERI. Thank you for joining us this morning, and, and yes, if, I can tell you, the commissioners, you sit down with the commissioners, they'll tell you what they need, uh, for their precincts and, and, uh, and basically infrastructure and any help with, uh, personnel that, uh, some of their departments may need, but I, I, I think you're very well versed on what communities our side would need, and if you come across something that we haven't, uh, been informed about, yes.
Well, actually, I was gonna present the safer, but because you're already gonna do that, you know, I do recommend that you move forward with that safer grant. I do have an overview, but, you know, I am sure that you're gonna take care of that one. We've done that before, it's very much needed, just like she stated, it's for personnel, uh, or retention, if you wanna pay, you know, your current, uh, firefighters a, a stipend to keep them, you know, to retain them, you wanna pay them well.
That is a problem, that's an issue that, uh, we live into larger communities, yes, unfortunately, yes.
This grant would help, you know, to retain those and then bring on anyone else that, you know, you wanna add to the department, so... Uh, but yes, those are the kind of things that we would be able to, you know, anything above and beyond what you already have, uh, in place, we're here to assist.
I appreciate that, I'm, you know, they, they, there is a contract, I don't know if you were given it, uh...
Uh, Judge, uh, did, um, was it supposed to be...
Well, no, if, if we can look at it, uh, review it...
Yeah, Judge, I think, look, I don't, I remember it being an exclusive contract, Judge.
No, no, it's not exclusive.
Yeah, so...
It just, uh, if, if they apply for and receive a grant, there's a percentage of, which normally is, is the process we, we don't...
Yeah, we, we waive RBS and only, uh, put them in, uh, to manage, and so it's usually written in for additional services. Um, and if there is a grant that doesn't allow us to do that, you know, because let's say it's just an equipment grant, then we let you know ahead of time, and then we do those typically at a flat rate, you know, so you don't have to, uh...
I think the only thing I did...
Judge, I had not reviewed it, Judge, it was first...
And it caught my attention was, uh, the venue. Could Zapata County work for you?
Absolutely, absolutely, we get a...
We love you, all the county, mother...
No, no, I completely understand, I mean, we work with, you know, like I mentioned, twenty-two, twenty-three other states, so they always have us change the venue, so it's okay.
Okay, well, I guess we can review it, commissioners, and, uh, I don't know, oh, Counselor, can you here, try to...
Yes, Judge, uh, I need to review, Judge, so you paid as long, if you give me about, uh, five, ten minutes, I should be able to get through it. Judge, would you, the, uh, the Court can approve it, subject to my approval, if the Court is inclined to do that.
I, I think it just gives us, uh, another option, another set of eyes on, on some of the needs that...
When did you say your fees were, man?
It's, uh, twelve percent, but we negotiated, I think we're only paying six or eight, or...
Eight percent.
Eight, so, depending on the grants, uh, we negotiate, depending on the amount of services.
And no, no front charge to keep us informed of any...
No, no, we just, uh, send you those notices, we do it on a one page, and I'm gonna share it, not because I wanna do the grant now, since I know you have someone else that's gonna do that, this grant, but this is what we send you, uh, and it'll tell you the purpose, eligibility, when the grant is due, what you can, what are considered the allowances that you can. So we give you these on, uh, the grants, that way you're kept up to date and you know if you wanna pursue it or not.
So to say, I'm interested in, uh, in a grant, I get ahold of you guys, so there'll be no front charge unless we get the grant, is that correct?
Correct.
And sort of award it?
Right, we're, we're sticking on, uh, contingency, we're close to, uh, seven hundred million that we have secured. And we're at an eighty percent success rate, and then we track all of our, uh, clients and, uh, which ones got awarded and which ones didn't. And again, you're gonna see if we send you that success rate, the majority are schools and colleges, uh, but we have worked with five counties now. So we are, uh, able to assist if they are required.
Also, I think Commissioner Moya's, uh, motion by Commissioner Moya, seconded, uh, by Commissioner Solis to enter into an agreement, uh, with, uh, Comprehensive Training Center, uh, pending our attorney's review, and, uh... Any other discussion? Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, thanks so much, and we'll keep in touch, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we've got some line items, commissioners, uh, transfer just one.
Motion to approve line item, Counselor, number twenty-four.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Casa, to approve line item transfer, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we've got, uh, resolution number twenty-four, I don't know if we have any final items, is it on this?
Yes, sir.
Alzheimer's.
That's it?
We'll do the last case.
And to approve proclamation for Alzheimer's and brain awareness, and, uh, for, oh, thank you, man, for joining us.
Of course.
Yes.
I have some information for you, just to, and then she has a proclamation for you as well. I'm excited to hear that you have grants, uh, writers available.
Yes.
Because, not on my, I, agenda, but I can certainly share with you that we have, the Alzheimer's Association is funding... Uh, unfortunately, uh, maybe backtrack. Good morning, commissioners, and everybody. My name is Maxine Gueda, I'm the program manager for the Alzheimer's Association.
I've got to get your name, ma'am.
Maxine Gueda.
Maxine, yeah, thank you, welcome.
And I'm the program manager for the Alzheimer's Association, so our main office is in San Antonio, but I'm entrusted with the entire Rivendi Valley, all the communities in between, all the way to Webb County, so you're one of my, uh, and trustees. So I wanted to share with you that we do have a grant that I hope at some point you do consider applying for, 'cause you can benefit at your residence.
Okay.
So year twenty-five, we should just fund it, but it opens up again in, in, um, April twenty-twenty-six, and it's called a community, uh, it's dementia centers for respite innovation. And it's basically so that communities, especially that are rural communities, can open up or create centers for people with dementia. So it could be like an activity center, but only for those people, could be a respite really for families that are caring for someone. And it starts anywhere between twenty thousand to a quarter million of dollars, whether it's a planning or if it's, you're gonna start a, a program, you have your site, you're ready to go, and you need the funding, it would be available. There's only two conditions, there has to be sustainability plan for longevity of the project, and there has to be, and there is a twenty percent match, but it's not all cash, it's, uh, it's a combination of cash plus in-kind and volunteer hours. But it's very, I mean, especially in communities like ours, that we don't have a lot of resources available and people are working, it could be something that could benefit tremendously, um, the caregiver, um, in there. So I will definitely be in touch, and in touch with all of you.
Give us a heads up, next year.
Yes, of course, and so that you can get funded, um, on these, um, these resources and the state now has a dementia-related program, the Alzheimer's dementia-related disorders, then also we'll be providing funding in the year twenty-six, and that's another opportunity, um...
That's because unfortunately, uh, dementia's not considered a mental illness, so a lot of the funding that would be available for, for those types of diseases is not, uh, available for dementia patients and, uh, placement, uh, anything that, uh...
It's so difficult, and it's so taxing on our caregivers, it, although it's not a mental disorder, it does create more, um...
It's a lot of strain, yes.
You know, like depression and anxiety, not only for the person with dementia, but also for the person that is caring for them. And then when we're not well-equipped to, to care for them, it does create more chaos for all the families, right? And you're right, we have an aging population, we're over seventy million people now diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, and it's also because people are getting diagnosed a lot sooner in the disease process. I believe I was here about a year ago or so, talked about the numbers, um, Zapata County unfortunately is at fourteen percent of incidence amongst your population, so that's a very high number considering the number of people that we live. It continues to be, um, they, the, firstly, like the sixth leading cause of death in the United States. Everybody else has a contingency plan to lower those deaths, but not Alzheimer's disease. Fortunately, we now have a FDA-approved blood test that can really help individuals get diagnosed a lot sooner. So if you're fifty-five years and older, you're gonna be able to benefit from that program. We're just hoping that Medicare chooses to pay, um, for that cost, and then it's, and then eventually all the insurance companies will also be covering that cost. So that is why I'm here, because June is Brain, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. We bring awareness to the fact that this is a disease that is not slowing down. On the contrary, we're getting more individuals diagnosed, we're getting better at diagnosing people with the disease, and we're starting to see people that are in their thirties, forties, and fifties really also be affected with Alzheimer's and other related dementia. Very common amongst Hispanics is the vascular dementia because of diabetes, hypertension, or high cholesterol, or even strokes. So we are at risk, and so that's why I'm here, seeking a proclamation to bring awareness and opening the doors for collaboration. If you like, if you come and sit here at least twice a month, and maybe give me a little space and, and be with families, or do outreach, benefits, whatever, it, it really entails. It's been, it's been a tough market for me to open doors in Zapata, so I ask for your help, um, to make that happen in this community.
Well, we can certainly help and facilitate that if...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, and we have, while we do great things in Laredo, we do great things in the valley, the middle communities continue to be left behind because there's still a stigma attached to being diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and we wanna be able to redeem that stigma when it comes to, uh, to this disease, yes.
Man.
Oh, when you say it's fourteen percent in Zapata County, what's the, the US average or Texas average?
So Texas right now stands at, uh, eleven percent diagnosis, so you're even higher than the state of Texas. Uh, for example, El Paso County of all the state of Texas ranks number one, and nationwide, we run number ten in, uh, incidents of dementia. Could be diets, it could be, uh, environmental factors, we don't know, we still don't have, it's so hard with, with Alzheimer's to really predict what is the cause, 'cause it could be individuals that don't have any corneal disease, corneal disease, like any other kind of disease, but they still will get dementia, they will still, so we... If one in five will get dementia, why is it that if you and I share the same risk factors, why is it that only one of us is gonna get the dementia? So we wanna, we wanna get closer to that, hopefully. So indeed, we're seeking a proclamation to declare June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Do you want me to read it, or...
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, where, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Proclamation, whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairment, and whereas an estimated seven million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's, including four hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred in Texas, whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the fifth leading cause among the elderly. And whereas, according to the Alzheimer's Association Facts and Figures Report, the direct cost for caring for those with Alzheimer's to American society is valued at three hundred and eighty-four billion, and more than twelve million caregivers provide nineteen billion hours of unpaid care to those with Alzheimer's or other dementia. And in Texas, nearly one point one million family members and friends cared for people with Alzheimer's and other dementia, providing one point nine billion hours of unpaid care with the annual value of this caregiving totally thirty-three point one billion. And whereas, in recognition of those individuals, of, of the individual families, and the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with Alzheimer's disease, and the researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and whereas the county of Zapata recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's and other dementia, thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers, and now therefore being resolved that, uh, Zapata County Commissioners Court, on behalf of the, uh, county of Zapata, duty here, right, proclaim, uh, June second, twenty-twenty-five as, uh, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Thank you.
All right.
To approve a proclamation as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Casa, any discussion? Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for joining us, and yes, my, call, my office is ninety-seven six five nine nine twenty.
Okay.
Call my office if you need, if you want a, a place to, to set up and whatever we can support to it.
Yes, absolutely, and like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm open and willing to support the community however I can.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judge, I make a motion enter to executive session.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to enter to executive session, seconded by Commissioner Moya. Uh, uh, the item to be heard is item number twenty-three, uh, to discuss and approve the code for damages at the Zapata County Cemetery, and this, uh, item will be heard under section, government code five five one, point zero seven one, consultation, uh, with attorney. We are now in executive session.
Mary Jane, did you get the confirmation?
No, I don't have it.
Uh, who stayed with it?
I am, I'm, I'll be... I am, I'm on top, you're on...
I've had...